John Rogers. He is a member of the United States Court of Appeals for the Sixth Circuit. He is formerly a professor at the University of Kentucky Law School. And so Judge Rogers, I will turn the program over to you. And I'd ask you all to stand, please.
Thank you very much, Mayor. It's a pleasure and an honor to be here and to do this. Doug, this is the oath to which you will be swearing. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the office of member of the Council of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government according to law. And I do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present Constitution, I, being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending. So help me God. Do you so swear?
Congratulations. Thank you. Before they get away, I want to take advantage of the opportunity to recognize Doug's wife, Lee Ellen, and his son Reynolds and daughter Ellie. We are delighted to have your dad and husband working with us, and we appreciate your sharing them with us. Have a good evening. Now we'll go ahead and call the meeting of the council to order. Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll.
Ms. Crosby? Mr. Ellinger?
Here.
Ms. Feigl?
Ms. Gordon?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Ms. Henson?
Here.
Ms. James?
Mr. Lane?
Here.
Ms. Lawless?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. McCord?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Stenit?
Mr. Beard?
Present.
And Mr. Blues?
Here.
Thank you very much. I believe we have a quorum present. It's my pleasure to welcome to the podium Pastor Chris Jackson of the St. John's Lutheran Church to bring us our invocation this evening. Pastor Jackson.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Gracious Lord, when you approached Solomon in a dream, he asked for wisdom that he might guide your people in ways of peace and prosperity. You were glad to grant this to him, and so you showed your pleasure with all good government. Good government is needed in every age, but especially is wisdom needed in this time, this time of financial recession. For the incomes of our families are suffering, and businesses as well, and therefore governments across this land are facing their own fiscal difficulties. And so, oh Lord, bless your servants here, the leaders of this great city of Lexington. Grant wisdom, discernment, skill, and ability to the mayor, to the vice mayor, to all council members, and all officials elected and appointed, that they might lead our city in ways of peace and prosperity. Through Jesus Christ, your Son, our Lord, who lives and reigns with you, and Holy Spirit, on God, now and forever. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Jackson. We have the minutes of several prior meetings. We continue to catch up a little bit. Is there a motion that those minutes be approved?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon, a second by Councilmember Ellinger to approve the minutes that are specified on the docket. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, we're ready for the ordinances entitled to the second reading to be read.
There's actually a motion for the first ordinance.
All right. Counts...
Move approval, Mayor.
Well, we need...
Oh, do you have...
We have a motion, I believe, Councilmember James? All right. Has anyone seen Councilmember James? All right, Councilmember McCord.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to amend ordinance number one under the second reading of ordinances to correct the chapters being amended. This is not a material change and doesn't require a new first reading. We're changing it from chapter 22 to chapter 21, so moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember McCord, and a second by Councilmember Blues to amend ordinance one as specified. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Councilmember Martin notes his abstention. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number one, as amended. An ordinance amending section 21-5-2 of the Code of Ordinances abolishing one position of Risk Management Accountant, grade 114E in the Division of Risk Management, and creating one position of Risk Management Accountant, grade 114E in the Division of Accounting, and amending section 22-5-2 of the Code of Ordinances abolishing one position of Administrative Specialist Senior, grade 112N, in the Division of Accounting, and creating one position of Administrative Specialist Senior, grade 112N, in the Division of Human Resources, transferring the incumbents and appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 96. Number two, an ordinance pursuant to section 3.02 subsection 10 of the Charter of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government, amending section 21-5-2 of the Code of Ordinances abolishing six positions of Community Corrections Major, grade 117E, and creating six positions of Community Corrections Captain, grade 115E, accepting the voluntary demotions of the six employees holding the position of Community Corrections Major to Community Corrections Captain, creating section 21-53 of the Code of Ordinances granting the Director of Community Corrections the authority to make special duty assignments, providing that employees appointed to special duty assignments serve at the pleasure of the Director of Community Corrections, and providing that those employees appointed to a special duty assignment shall receive a leave of absence from their permanent rank for and during the incumbency of any special duty assignment, expression, and intent to create the special duty assignment of Bureau Manager, and providing that employees appointed to the special duty assignment of Bureau Manager shall receive a stipend of $350 per pay period effective upon date of passage. Number three, an ordinance amending section 21-5-2 of the Code of Ordinances correcting the subsection line number for the Director of Facilities and Fleet Management. Number four, an ordinance amending section 21-5-2 of the Code of Ordinances creating one position of Environmental Program Manager Energy, grade 117E, in the Division of Environmental Policy. Number five, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a donation of $500 from the American Water Company for the purchase of a treadmill for the Dunbar Community Center and appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 95. Number six, there's a motion on that one?
Is there a motion? Councilmember Blues.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that ordinance number six on the docket under second reading ordinances concerning budget amendments to be... concerning budget amendments be amended to reflect a correction in accounting related to the Lilly Program and to substitute a corrected schedule of amendments. The division number on the original schedule is incorrect and needs to be changed. This amendment is not a material change, and the ordinance as amended may be given second reading, so moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Blues, and a second by Councilmember Gordon to amend as specified. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk.
Number six, as amended, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and reappropriating funds, schedule number 100. Number seven, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority, which grant funds are in the amount of $3,100,000 Commonwealth of Kentucky funds, are for construction of the Expansion Area 2A Class A Pump Station and Trunk Sewer, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 97, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number eight, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, which grant funds are in the amount of $1,430,000 federal funds, are for continuation of the housing opportunities for persons with AIDS program, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 99, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. And number nine, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority, which grant funds are in the amount of $600,000 Commonwealth of Kentucky funds, are for the provision of sanitary sewer service to underserved households in the Leesway neighborhood, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 98, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget.
Thank you very much. The floor is open for a motion to approve those ordinances. Councilmember Blues has moved their approval. Councilmember Myers has seconded that motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor of those motions, please... those ordinances, please indicate by saying... voting aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay electronically. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Lawless?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Lawless. Excuse me. Sorry. Really apologize. Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Stenit?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Martin?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. Mr. Stenit, Mr. Beard?
Aye.
And Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Sorry.
Thank you very much. Those ordinances are approved. Madam Clerk, if you'll give first reading to the ordinances entitled to first reading.
Ordinance number 10, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government to reflect current requirements in the Division of Planning for Funds and the amount of $250 from Neighborhood Development Funds for the Safe Routes to School Training and Appropriating and Reappropriating Funds, schedule number 103. Number 11, an ordinance amending section 21-5-2 of the Code of Ordinances abolishing one position of Administrative Specialist Principal, grade 114E, one position of Revenue Processing Supervisor, grade 116E, one position of Revenue Compliance Auditor Supervisor, grade 116E, one position of Staff Assistant Senior, grade 108N, and one position of Collections Administrator, grade 115E, and creating five positions of Revenue Supervisor, grade 116E, and one position of Administrative Specialist, grade 110N, in the Division of Revenue, reclassifying the incumbents and appropriating funds pursuant to budget schedule number 102, retroactive to June 23, 2008. And there's a motion for number 12. Mr. Blues?
Councilmember Blues.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to amend ordinance number 12, which was on the docket for first reading, to add the applicant's proposed language that would allow banner poles and parking lots and other zones that are shown on approved final development plans for MU3 projects. So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Blues, and a second by Councilmember Ellinger. Is there any discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 12, as amended, an ordinance amending article 28-4H5, 28-5H5, 17-3C, and 17-5 of the zoning ordinance to allow additional signage in the mixed-use community MU3 zone, as amended. Number 13, an ordinance amending section 21-5-2 of the Code of Ordinances abolishing one position of Information Systems Specialist Senior, grade 114E, in the Division of Waste Management, and creating one position of Computer Analyst, grade 115E, in the Division of Computer Services and appropriating funds pursuant to budget schedule number 105. Number 14, an ordinance amending section 23-5B of the Code of Ordinances abolishing one position of Police Captain and creating one position of Police Lieutenant in the Division of Police. Number 15, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, which grant funds are in the amount of $10,000 federal funds, are for participation in assessments of critical infrastructure in Fayette County, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 104, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 16, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Fraternal Order of Firefighters of Lexington Fire Department Incorporated for construction of a monument at a cost not to exceed $10,000, and appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 75. Number 17, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and reappropriating funds, schedule number 101. And then there's a walk-on.
Councilmember Beard.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to place on the docket under first reading ordinances an ordinance accepting the bid of BCD Incorporated in the amount of $1,723,013 for construction and related services for the Raven Run Visitor and Tourist Center for the Division of Parks and Recreation, authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement and amending certain budgets of the Lexington Fayette County Government. So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Beard, and a second by Councilmember McCord to place that item on the docket. Is there any discussion? All in favor, then, of adding that item to the docket, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Thank you. The motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you give that ordinance its first reading?
Ordinance number 18, an ordinance accepting the bid of BCD Incorporated in the amount of $1,723,013 for construction and related services for the Raven Run Visitor and Tourist Center for the Division of Parks and Recreation, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with BCD Incorporated related to the bid and appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 106.
Thank you very much. Are there any motions, further motions? Very well, Madam Clerk, if you'll proceed to give second reading to the resolutions.
Resolution number one, a resolution accepting the bids of Ferguson Enterprises and HD Supply Water Works establishing price contracts for sanitary sewer repair materials for the Division of Water Quality. Number two, a resolution accepting the bid of Hydro Controls Incorporated establishing a price contract for electric actuators for the Division of Water Quality. Number three, a resolution accepting the bid of Strayford Pump and Supply Incorporated establishing a price contract for luminescent dissolved oxygen sensors and controllers for the Division of Water Quality. Number four, a resolution accepting the bid of Compass Group USA Incorporated Doing Business as Canteen establishing a price contract for vending services for the Division of Community Corrections. Number five, a resolution accepting the bids of Brent Tag Mid-South Incorporated, Delta Chemical Corporation, and Chimera Water Solutions Incorporated establishing price contracts for phosphorus reduction chemicals for the Division of Water Quality. Number six, a resolution accepting the bid of Enforcement Technology Group Incorporated in the amount of $25,052.99 for the Crisis Communication System for the Division of Police. Number seven, a resolution accepting the bid of Rayrig Pacific Company establishing a price contract for yard waste containers for the Division of Waste Management. Number eight, a resolution accepting the bid of American Fire and Security LLC establishing a price contract for sprinkler inspections for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. Number nine, a resolution ratifying the probationary civil service appointments of Joseph Lyon Landfill Inspector, grade 108N, 11.590 hourly, in the Division of Waste Management, effective January 5, 2009; Maddie Morton, Program Administrator, grade 117E; $2,417.28 bi-weekly in the Division of Youth Services, effective January 5, 2009; Elizabeth McGee, Budget Officer Senior, grade 120E, $2,454 bi-weekly in the Division of Budgeting, effective January 5, 2009; ratifying the permanent civil service appointments of Thomas Hillbrand, Treatment Plant Operator, grade 113N, in the Division of Water Quality, effective December 9, 2008; Jennifer Myatt, Program Specialist, grade 112E, in the Division of Water Quality, effective December 9, 2008; David Jett, Equipment Operator Senior, grade 109, in the Division of Waste Management, effective November 26, 2008; Timothy Edwards, Equipment Operator Senior, grade 109N, in the Division of Waste Management, effective November 26, 2008; ratifying the permanent sworn appointments of Todd Samuelson, Fire Captain, grade 316N, in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services, effective January 7, 2009; Philip McLean, Fire Lieutenant, grade 315N, in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services, effective January 7, 2009; approving the unclassified civil service appointments of Jessica Clark, Family Support Worker, Senior, grade 112N, 15.718 hourly, in the Division of Family Services, effective January 5, 2009; approving the unclassified civil service appointment to the Office of the Urban County Council of Willard Fogel Aid to Counsel, grade 000E, 1,0092308 bi-weekly, in the Office of the Urban County Council, effective January 5, 2009. Number 10, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from Winona White for the property located at 644 Wellington Way for the 3184 Trinity Road Storm Sewer Rehabilitation Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of $200 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 11, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a consent agreement with Felon McCord and Associates Incorporated and Felon McCord and Associates LLC consenting to the assignment of Felon McCord and Associates Incorporated for the... of the agreement for management of natural gas procurement for the Detention Center to Felon McCord and Associates LLC at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number 12, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for extension of the Portable Interoperable Communications Tower Project through June 30, 2009, at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number 13, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for extension of the Division of Police's Mobile Data Computer Network Project through June 30, 2009, at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number 14, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for extension of the Regional 911 System Project through June 30, 2009, at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number 15, a resolution pursuant to section 21-16B of the Code of Ordinances approving an acting assignment pay increase of greater than 10% for the acting senior advisor for policy and budget due to market demands and in recognition of the experience and exceptional qualifications of the employee. Number 16, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky State Police and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $40,468 federal funds and are for an enforcing underage drinking laws project. Number 17, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $14,000 federal funds and are for a juvenile fire center program, $5,000, and the purchase of controllable propane-fueled fire extinguisher training equipment and videos, $9,000. Number 18, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an environmental assessment license with the Marathon Petroleum Company LLC for performing activities related to an assessment of potential contamination at 1631 Old Frankfurt Pike landfill, at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number 19, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a memorandum of understanding with the U.S. Marshal Service for the District Fugitive Task Force, and authorizing the mayor to execute all future agreements with the U.S. Marshal Service that have the same terms, at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number 20, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with U.S. Bancorp for lease of a copier at a cost not to exceed 21, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a donation from Kentucky's Division of Emergency Management of Child Decontamination Kits, Voice Amplification Units, Headsets, Cable, and Pelican Cases for the use at the Division of Emergency Management, at no cost to the Urban County Government. 22, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with GEI Calgraph for the service of a GEI Calgraph machine at a cost not to exceed $1,720, with future years' payments subject to appropriations by council. 23, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an addendum to the Master Agreement with Computer Sciences Corporation and/or any of its affiliates for third-party program license protection for third-party software programs installed during the risk master software upgrade, at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number 24, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a contract amendment with Joint Land Neighbor Association for extension of the contract for Neighbor Action Match Programs funds through June 30, 2009, at no cost to the Urban County Government. 25, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $132,000 federal funds and are for an update of the freight study for the Division of Planning. And number 26, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Department of Military Affairs Kentucky Emergency Management Agency, which grant funds are in the amount of $1,4,692.50 federal funds, are for a flood mitigation project, including the purchase of nine properties on Fort Sumter Fort Drive, Cabot Drive, and Shannon Drive, the acceptance of which obligates the Urban County Government for the expenditure of $334,897.50 as a local match, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to approve those resolutions? I have a motion by Councilmember Lane, and a second by Councilmember Stenit to approve the resolutions receiving second reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of those resolutions, please indicate by voting aye electronically. All those opposed, vote nay electronically. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Henson?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Ms. Lawless?
Yes.
Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Stenit?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
And Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those resolutions are approved. Madam Clerk, if you'll give first reading to those resolutions entitled to first reading.
Resolution number 27, a resolution accepting the bid of Jay Ettinger &amp; Son Incorporated establishing a price contract for a tailgate spreader parker compatible for the Division of Fleet Facilities and Fleet Management. 28, a resolution accepting the bid of RNS Commercial and Cleaning Services establishing a price contract for custodial services in the General Services Building for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. 29, a resolution accepting the bid of Lexington Manufacturing Center Doing Business as Opportunity Workshop of Lexington Incorporated establishing a price contract for custodial services for the Coroner's Office and Fire Arson Unit for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. 30, a resolution accepting the bid of Mary's Cleaning Services establishing a price contract for custodial services for the Downtown Arts Center for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. 31, a resolution accepting the bid of RNL Cleaning Services establishing a price contract for custodial services for the Senior Citizens Center for the Division of Facility and Fleet Management. 32, a resolution accepting the bid of Jay Ettinger &amp; Son Incorporated establishing a price contract for dump bodies for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. 33, a resolution accepting the bid of Mary's Cleaning Services establishing a price contract for custodial services for the Recycling Center for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. 34, a resolution accepting the bid of Woodall Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $564,965 for the Meadows-Northland Arlington Neighborhood Improvement Project, Phase 3C for the Division of Engineering, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Woodall Construction Company Incorporated related to the bid. Number 35, a resolution accepting the bid of Mary's Cleaning Services establishing a price contract for custodial services for the Fire Department 911 Call Center for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. Number 36, a resolution accepting the bid of Mary's Cleaning Services establishing a price contract for custodial services for the County Extension Office for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. 37, a resolution accepting the bid of Riley Oil Company establishing a price contract for diesel fuel large vehicles for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. 38, a resolution accepting the bid of Riley Oil Company establishing a price contract for bulk fuel for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. Number 39, a resolution accepting the bid of Mary's Cleaning Services establishing a price contract for custodial services for the Police Roll Call Central, Goodwin Drive, for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. Number 40, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an engineering services agreement with GRW Engineers Incorporated for investigation and design for Expansion Area 2A Pumping Station and Force Maintenance at a cost not to exceed $380,000. Number 41, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a memorandum of understanding with Kentucky Utilities for the Downtown Lexington Streetscape Project at a cost not to exceed $97,636.1. 42, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from Ronald &amp; Sue Allen for the property located at 641 Wellington Way for the 3184 Trinity Road Storm Sewer Rehabilitation Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of $100 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. There's a public meeting on number 43 to be called, Mayor? A public meeting on number 43?
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, I appreciate you bringing that to my attention. We are required, in connection with resolution number 43, to conduct a public meeting on this particular topic, so let me call that public meeting to order for purposes of seeing if there was anyone who wishes to address that particular issue this evening. if there was anyone who wishes to address that particular issue this evening. Mr. McCarthy, if you'll step to the podium, you'll have three moments.
Actually, on this one, I just wanted to ask, does anybody have anything they can project that would show a map of where this trail is going, or can anybody describe it to me?
Mr. Levin, if you could come and describe the location of the trail, we would appreciate it.
Doesn't look like it's going to cut any distance off my trip from home to the office, which was what I thought.
Mr. Levin, if you don't mind, if you could project the photo that you have on the screen and just run through the location of the trail so those who may be viewing from home will have the opportunity to understand the nature of the project.
Sure. This is a trail project along the abandoned rail line, the RJ Corman Rail Line from Fourth Street, parallel to Jefferson Street up to Loudoun Avenue. It's about 3,000 feet, and it's part of the Legacy Trail Project.
Thank you very much. There we have a map. And since we now have the map on the screen, Mr. Levin, if you would be so kind as to sort of point out on the map where the trail runs, it's a little...
Sure.
...a little hard to see.
The trail begins at Fourth Street, which is down here, then it runs along the abandoned rail line past Coolivan Park, so it will connect the neighborhood to Coolivan Park. Then it will continue on up to right here where the active rail line is. The Hope Center is right here. In another grant, we will be looking for a bridge to go over the active rail line. It will come down on Loudoun Avenue, and then from Loudoun Avenue, it will go past the YMCA, up through Lexmark, which is going in that direction.
I apologize for being so dense about this, but could you sort of orient us and show us where some landmarks might be?
This is Jefferson Street. This is Fourth Street. And Fifth Street. Coolivan Park is right here. And then Loudoun Avenue is right here.
All right. That helps.
Okay.
The label for Coolivan Park appears to be across Loudoun Avenue from where the park's actually located there. Very good. Any questions from anyone else, or any comments? Thank you, Mr. Levin.
Thank you.
And Madam Clerk, we'll continue with the first readings. We'll adjourn the public meeting and continue now with the first readings.
Resolution number 43, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Department for Local Government and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $75,000 federal funds and are for construction of the Coolivan Rail Trail. Number 44, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a facility use contract with the Fayette County Board of Education for the use of the James Lane Allen Elementary School gym at no cost to the government. Number 45, a resolution changing the street name and property address number of 1969 Edgeworth Drive to 1949 Lakewood Court, changing the property address numbers of 2321 Fortune Drive to 2331 Fortune Drive, of 3975 Leestown Road to 3899 Leestown Road, of 173 through 175 Montmoreland Street to 175 Montmoreland Street, and of 2426 Palumbo Drive to 2428 Palumbo Drive, and changing the street name of 1600, 1601, 1610, 1611, 1620, 1621, 1629, 1630, 1631, 1633, 1635, 1636, 1637, 1639, 1640, and 1650 Ashwood Drive to 1600, 1601, 1610, 1611, 1620, 1621, 1629, 1630, 1631, 1633, 1635, 1636, 1637, 1639, 1640, and 1650 Ashwood Road, and of 851 Todd's Road to 851 Old Todd's Road, all effective 30 days from passage. Number 46, a resolution ratifying the Department of Law's execution on behalf of the Urban County Government of a settlement agreement stipulation and recommendation and any other necessary settlement documents in Kentucky Public Service Commission Case Number 2008-2-00251 pertaining to the rates of the Kentucky Utilities Company. 47, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute agreements with Central Kentucky Radio I Incorporated, $1,000, Fayette County 4-H Council Incorporated, $675, the Nest Center for Women, Children, and Families Incorporated, $725, Bluegrass Community Foundation Incorporated, $500, and Community Action Council for Lexington, Fayette, Bourbon, Harrison, and Nicholas Counties Incorporated, $400 at a cost not to exceed the sum stated. Number 48, a resolution ratifying the probationary civil service appointments of Jennifer Cottles, Administer Specialist Principal Grade 114E, 1075944, biweekly in the Division of Emergency Management 911 effective January 19, 2009; Kelvin Jackson, Operations Manager, Grade 116E, 2014720, biweekly in the Division of Waste Management effective January 19, 2009; Robert Hazlett, Maintenance Mechanic, Grade 113N, 24.765 in the hourly in the Division of Water Quality effective January 19, 2009; ratifying the permanent civil service appointments of Stephen Farmer, Engineering Technician Senior, Grade 113N and 113E in the Division of Water Quality effective December 23, 2008; Larry Leach, Environmental Inspector, Grade 113N in the Division of Water Quality effective December 23, 2008; Charles Stein, Environmental Inspector, Grade 113N in the Division of Water Quality effective January 7, 2009; ratifying the probationary sworn appointments of Philip Butner, Tom Risen, Kenneth Ridge, William Sunook, Michael Graves, Fire Major, Grade 318E, 3,38138, biweekly in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services effective January 5, 2009; approving the voluntary demotion of Franklin Bright, Public Service Worker, Grade 106N, 12.157 hourly in the Division of Streets, Roads, and Forestry effective January 19, 2009. 49, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute three claims payment agreements with Humana Insurance Company for employee health insurance plans, Platinum PPO, Gold PPO, and Silver HDP for the period of January 1, 2009 through December 31, 2009. Number 50, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a memorandum of agreement with the University of Kentucky College of Social Work for a student intern in the Third District Council Office at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number 51, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice National Institute of Justice and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $230,000 federal funds under the solving cold cases with DNA program and are for the review and investigation of the violent crime cold cases. 52, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Department for Local Government and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $2 million federal funds under the Neighborhood Stabilization Program and are for the acquisition disposal and maintenance of distressed homes and demolition of blighted structures. Number 53, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit nine grant applications to the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $6,442,000 federal funds under the 2010 Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Program and are for the Fiber Optic Cable Installation Project, $320,000; the Lexington Area Air Quality Outreach Project, $80,000; the Loudoun Avenue Sidewalk Project, $240,000; the Georgian Way Pedestrian Bridge, $600,000; the Legacy Trail Phase 2, $2,400,000; the Legacy Trail Phase 3, $1,936,000; the Southland Drive Bike Pedestrian Improvements Project, $240,000; the Town Branch Trail Crossing Project, $420,000; and the Yellow Bike Program, $206,000. Number 54, a resolution amending Section 2 of Resolution Number 737, 2008 relating to the relocation of utilities for the Liberty Todd's Road project to provide for payment to Kentucky Utilities Company. Number 55, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a facility usage agreement with Fayette County Board of Education for use of the Bryan Station High School gym at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number 56, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Columbia Gas of Kentucky for relocation of utilities for the Clay's Mill Road Improvements Project at a cost not to exceed $485,913. Number 57, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with the Kentucky Utilities Company for relocation of utilities for the Clay's Mill Road Improvements Project at a cost not to exceed $126,085. Number 58, a resolution authorizing and directing the Department of Law on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute letters engaging the law firms of Frost Brown Todd LLC and Henry Watts Gardner &amp; Sellers, PLLC to represent the interests of the Urban County Government and multiple governmental defendants in a lawsuit in Fayette Circuit Court. Number 59, a resolution accepting the bid of TW Telecom of Kentucky LLC in accordance with the provisions of Ordinance Number 240, 2008, creating and offering for sale a franchise for the operation of a non-exclusive telecommunications system in Fayette County through December 8, 2011, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a franchise agreement with TW Telecom of Kentucky LLC incorporating the terms and conditions of Ordinance Number 240, 2008. Number 60, a resolution accepting the bid of Level 3 Communications LLC in accordance with the provisions of Ordinance Number 240, 2008, creating an offering for sale a franchise for the operation of non-exclusive telecommunications system in Fayette County through December 8, 2011, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a franchise agreement with Level 3 Communications LLC incorporating the terms and conditions of Ordinance Number 240, 2008. 61, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a sales order, service order, and work order with Icon Office Solutions Incorporated for service and parts related to the copier upgrade for the council clerk's office at a cost not to exceed $2,780. And number 62, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a construction operators cooperative agreement for storm water pollution prevention with Kentucky American Water for installation of a water connection for the sprinkler system in the Police Technical Services Building at a cost not to exceed $14,500.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That completes the reading of the resolutions entitled to first reading. I understand that we have several motions. Councilmember Henson.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to remove from the table and place on the docket under first reading of resolutions, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute change order number one to the contract with the Allen Company Incorporated for the Appomattox Road Culvert Replacement Project, increasing the contract price by the sum of $31,716.82 from $282,080.90 to $313,797.72. So moved.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Henson, and a second by Councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion? All in favor then of adding that item to the docket, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, will you give it first reading, or you prefer to do them all?
We can do it either way if you want to go on and do...
Let's... I think we have a couple more, so let's go ahead and knock those out. Councilmember Blues, I believe you had one as well.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to place on the docket under first reading resolutions, a resolution accepting the bid of Siemens Water Technologies Corporation in the amount of $44,502 for servicing of emergency vapor systems at Town Branch and West Hickman Wastewater Treatment Plants for the Division of Water Quality. So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Blues and a second by Councilmember Myers. Any discussion? All in favor of adding that item, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Councilmember Lawless.
I move to place on the docket a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Department of Local Government for the Division of Water Quality. So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lawless and a second by Councilmember Ellinger to add that item to the docket. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Any further motions? Very well, Madam Clerk, if you'd give first reading to those three items.
Resolution number 63 for first reading, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute change order number one final to the contract with the Allen Company Incorporated for the Appomattox Road Culvert Replacement Project, increasing the contract price by the sum of $31,716.82 from $282,080.90 to $313,797.72. Number 64, a resolution accepting the bid of Siemens Water Technologies Corporation in the amount of $44,502 for servicing of emergency vapor systems at the Town Branch and West Hickman Wastewater Treatment Plants for the Division of Water Quality. And number 65, a resolution accepting... Excuse me, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a three-year agreement with AIDS Volunteers Incorporated for continuation of the housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, HOPEWA, project at a cost not to exceed $1,391,000.
Thank you. Are there motions? Councilmember Gordon.
Yes, Mayor. I move to suspend the rules and give second reading to number 41.
Councilmember Myers.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to suspend the rules and give second reading. I've been asked to do this by Law Department for number 59, 60, and 61. Thank you.
All right, I'll treat that as a second to Councilmember Gordon's motion to suspend the rules. And we'll add on a few more informally here. Councilmember McCord.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to add number 43, 53, and 56, please.
Councilmember Stenett.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to add number 58 for the Law Department as well.
Councilmember Lawless. All right. My list reflects, we have a motion by Councilmember Myers and a second by Council... Excuse me, a motion by Councilmember Gordon and a second by Councilmember Myers to suspend the rules for purposes of giving second reading to items 41, 43, 50, 53, 56, 58, 59, 60, 61, and 65. Did I miss any? All right. Those in favor of suspending the rules to give second reading to those items, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Resolution number 41 for second reading, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a memorandum of understanding with Kentucky Utilities Company for the Downtown Lexington Streetscape Project at a cost not to exceed $97,636.1. 43, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Department for Local Government and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $75,000 federal funds and are for construction of the Coolivan Rail Trail. Number 50, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a memorandum of agreement with the University of Kentucky College of Social Work for a student intern in the Third District Council Office at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number 53, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit nine grant applications to the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant applications, which grant funds are in the amount of $6,442,000 federal funds under the 2010 Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Program and are for the Fiber Mitigation Air Quality Program and are for the Fiber Optic Cable Installation Project $320,000, the Lexington Area Air Quality Outreach Project $80,000, the Loudon Avenue Sidewalk Project $240,000, the Georgian Way Pedestrian Bridge $600,000, the Legacy Trail Phase Two, $2,400,000, the Legacy Trail Phase Three, $1,936,000, the Southland Drive Bike Pedestrian Improvements Project $240,000, the Town Branch Trail Crossing Project $420,000, and the Yellow Bike Program $206,000. Number 56, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Columbia Gas of Kentucky for relocation of utilities for the Clay's Mill Road Improvements Project at a cost not to exceed $485,913. 58, a resolution authorizing and directing the Department of Law on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute letters engaging the law firms of Frost Brown Todd LLC and Henry Watts Gardner &amp; Sellers, PLLC, to represent the interests of the Urban County Government and multiple governmental defendants in a lawsuit in Fayette Circuit Court. 59, a resolution accepting the bid of TW Telecom of Kentucky LLC in accordance with the provisions of ordinance number 240, 2008, creating an offering for sale a franchise for the operation of a non-exclusive telecommunications system in Fayette County through December 8, 2011, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a franchise agreement with TW Telecom of Kentucky LLC incorporating the terms and conditions of ordinance number 240, 2008. Number 60, a resolution accepting the bid of Level 3 Communications LLC in accordance with the provisions of ordinance number 240, 2008, creating an offering for sale a franchise for the operation of a non-exclusive telecommunications system of Fayette County through December 8, 2011, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a franchise agreement with Level 3 Communications LLC incorporating the terms and conditions of ordinance number 240, 2008. 61, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a sales order, service order, and work order with Icon Office Solutions Incorporated for service and parts related to a copier upgrade for the council clerk's office at no cost, at a cost not to exceed $2,780. And number 65, as resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a three-year agreement with AIDS Volunteers Incorporated for continuation of the housing opportunities for persons with AIDS project at a cost not to exceed $1,391,000.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve those resolutions? Councilmember Ellinger has moved the approval. Councilmember Myers has seconded that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay electronically. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Ellinger.
Yes.
Ms. Gordon.
Aye.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Ms. Henson.
Yes.
Ms. James.
Yes.
Mr. Lane.
Yes.
Ms. Lawless.
Mr. McCord.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Stenit.
Mr. Beard.
Aye.
And Mr. Blues.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Those resolutions are approved. I think we're now ready to proceed to item eight on the agenda, communications from the mayor. A motion to approve those appointments would be in order.
Second.
Councilmember Beard has moved those recommendations to be approved. Councilmember Gordon has seconded that motion. Any discussion? All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. There are a few communications for information items only under item nine. Some reports from building inspection have previously been circulated. Are there any announcements?
Mayor.
Oh, go ahead. Vice Mayor Gray.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mayor, I'm going to appoint tonight or announce the appointment of the task force to work with the administration in establishing the request for proposals for the proposed government Actually have three, the structure of this task force would be comprised of three groups, ex officio members, core committee or working members, and professional advisory members. And as far as the core committee members, two council members have indicated an interest in this, Councilmember McCord and Councilmember Lawless. And in addition to myself, we'll ask Chris Kimmel, Steve Austin, Ed Holmes, Phil Holbeck, Knox Van Ogle, Bill Johnston of the Western Suburb Neighborhood, Dan Rowland of the Downtown Neighborhoods, and Council Clerk or County Clerk, Don Blevins, and former council member Don Blevins, whose office would be affected if we do make a move. We'll also be inviting, as ex officio members, ad hoc, if you will, members, the mayor, Congressman Chandler has indicated an interest, and of course, any council members. And in addition, I'd like to ask that, we'll be asking these people to join us as professional advisory members, former dean of the UK College of Architecture and the chairman of the Downtown Development Authority, David Moni, the current dean of UK Architecture, Michael Speaks, Commissioner Cole, senior advisor Joe Kelly, as well as Lexarx President Jim Clark, Downtown Lexington Association President Renee Jackson, and Lexington Convention and Visitor Center President David Lord. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember McCord.
Thank you, Mayor. Just as an announcement that I'll make also on Tuesday, but I wanted to invite council members next Thursday, January 29th and Friday, the 30th, we've got some visitors coming in from Columbus, Ohio that we had the opportunity to meet that basically oversee their downtown planning commission. And these folks have said that they would like to come in and meet with whomever in our government to talk about how they do downtown master planning, how they do downtown development. And after spending some time with these folks, I really believe it's worth all of our time to try and schedule some time with them. They've got two meetings, meeting times on Thursday, the 29th, 2:30 and 5 o'clock at the Phoenix Building, and then five, excuse me, Friday at 8:00 a.m. at the Phoenix Building. And if you would have any interest in that, please call Renee Jackson. But I know a number of us have already secured some times, but this is probably one of the most important opportunities that we've got to really look at how we look at downtown development in light of government centers and Center Point and Distillery District. I think this is a very relevant discussion. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember McCord. Any other announcements? That brings us down to the last item on our agenda, which is public comment. Does any member of the public wish to address the council? Mr. McCarthy.
First off, Your Honor, I think that trying to replace this building at this time would be a whole lot more money than this government should be spending when money is tight, at least unless the federal government offers to chip in some of that stimulus money toward it. Second, proposals I've heard for replacing Rupp Arena with a new arena also strike me as wasteful of money. It seems to me the priority ought to be getting the existing Rupp Arena paid off completely before anybody starts trying to build anything new to replace it. And while I know some people like these trails you're proposing to build, the way they're being routed doesn't essentially do me much good getting to the places I want to try to get. For me, it would make more sense and make it easier to pedal more places if you were to physically widen certain streets that are kind of squished to add bike lanes to them on, that would be part of the street, and extend Fifth Street through where Eastern State Hospital is now, plus a few other properties to tie to Newtown. And those, what was initially marked as bike lanes and then scratched out on Newtown Pike, I thought it was because of the bumps in the gutters, but someone tells me it's actually because they were one foot shy of meeting the standards. Well, it strikes me that a project to widen the pavement by one foot, taking that land from the utility strip would be just enough to get the gutters replaced. And that would be more useful to me than the so-called Legacy Trail, which seems to meander further out of the way than the streets we've got now. I do think that connecting up as many of the dead ends as possible is a good thing for people on bicycles and people on foot, as well as the people on cars. I do think that streets that are expected to handle more than a certain volume of traffic should have bike lanes built into them, and any new street should have a sidewalk on each side of it. Now, when it comes to retrofitting the existing streets, okay, Tate's Creek is worth spending the money, even if you have to call out the National Guard to suppress a few protesters to put sidewalks on it. On the other hand, putting sidewalks on Harry Street in front of my house wouldn't particularly bother me, other than that I think it was an incredible waste of money, because the street gets so little traffic.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Does anyone else wish to address the council? Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Have a motion by Councilmember Stenit, a second by Vice Mayor Gray. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you.
One's out of here.